Hey, you're fighting here.
Y'all ready to call it off?
Yeah.
Alright.
I'm gonna go yes and I'll go home.
Oh?
I'm ready to go.
This is, both of these are, we're having continued meetings. So let's, uh... Call, uh, first, the Emergency Communication District. Continued meeting. To order. Go call Mr. Cobb.
Here.
Ms. Owens.
Here.
Mr. Hendrick.
Sir.
Mr. Hill.
Everyone is present. So, um, you have four matters to be addressed. Surplus equipment.
Um, we, uh, found the trailer, the black trailer. And so we just need to, um, sign a transfer of property on it. The other, the, um, other white truck, we will have to do a title search on it. We never got the information on it.
We had a title for it one time.
We cannot locate it.
Okay.
Lisa tore her office apart and I tore mine apart. And we tore the archive apart and we can't locate it.
Well, that, we can get that down in my eyes, I was screaming.
Yeah. We talked about that a little bit today. Did y'all call them about it?
Not yet. I was having negotiations on that.
Does that need to be voted on now?
Yeah.
Alright, the motion is to make the particular white truck, you got something?
I mean, without, no one who the Cobb is blaming, man, how can he vote to turbo it?
It's just not surplus or just transferring, transferring the property to City Hefflin. We can't really surplus it. It's a working order.
Is that what you plan on doing? That's the motion. What's the motion gonna be?
Well, I guess first we gotta put it in surplus. Or did we do that the last time?
If, if, I don't think you have to put it in circles, do you?
It's transfer.
My motion is just to transfer the property over to the City Hefflin.
One agency to another. Another, yeah. Alright, and you're doing what?
Truck and what?
Truck and truck.
It's a certain truck you have in?
So, EMA truck.
The F-150.
I'm an EM, search and rescue truck.
Yeah.
F-150?
Yeah, three-hundred.
F-150 XLT.
Well, I did, I thought we did a search on that title a long time ago.
I've seen the title once before.
Uh, I think it might have been a copy of it or something, but I can't remember as best as well. That truck was sent out there.
And trailer?
Couple years.
Yes, and the trailer is a Dixie Craft trailer.
Is it?
Yes.
Is the trailer on the road from the county?
Yeah, I think, with the last lady following him, he's never spoken up.
I brought, I brought Leah up here and looked at it all and, uh... The only thing, the bad thing about these things that we got, it's only big enough to get your baby through. The door, it's not like it'd be nice, yeah, if the road department had it, the whole back opens up and you can roll something up in.
I'm talking to a trailer.
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, it's a cover truck?
Yes.
Yes, cover truck, yeah. It's got, and it's got like a, a, no, mine is about, I guess what they use it for.
Storage.
Yeah, where you can walk through a door and in and out. But...
Fred can hold one more, really?
Well, we didn't. Six, five, four, five, out of operations.
Does it have an ID and a serial number on the trailer? We need to probably make sure the serial number on it.
Yeah. First, let me, let's do this first. Do we have a, the motion is, you want to transfer?
Our truck.
F-350 XLT for a trailer, alright? And Dixie Craft trailer?
To? The City Hefflin.
City Hefflin. Now, she motion, do we have a second?
I have a second.
You have a second right there. Alright, discussion, more discussion. Did we go?
Fred, I'm sorry, just.
Alright, so... The transfer in this truck, Dixie Craft trailer, that would be the resolution. If you can have one that ties up or anything, the resolution. But we tied something up. Don't really understand what the resolution is. Y'all ready to vote or you want to discuss?
Ready to vote.
All in favor say an aye?
Aye.
Any ahs? No. Okay. The ahs have it. Three. Dispatch fees. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion.
Ooh, what is? What's the resolution?
I don't know, what is the resolution? I mean...
I'm making, I'm making a motion that we go into a contract with the City of Hefflin for three-year debt for seventy-five thousand dollars per year.
Okay. Does that, does that cover the rest of dispatch fees? When you do this, or what? Or is this? I mean, we have a motion on the table, but I mean, I'm asking you.
The current, um, contract was seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five dollars, sixty-two cents. So the city came back and said that they would, um, they'd be willing to go to the seventy-five thousand, which I think is appropriate.
Okay. Who would get in discussion today? We have a second. I was just asking her. You got a second? Okay, go ahead, too.
Yeah, our last contract, then we have a five percent increase for each year. Was it going to have a five percent increase?
It's seventy-five. I'm going to show the track and score. How long? Three years.
Three-year contract, seven, seventy-five thousand.
Now, did, and everybody else has signed a contract so far?
No, I have no contracts in my hand.
Okay. You haven't signed with Ranberg yet?
Right.
I was like, Ranberg was waiting on Hefflin.
I thought it was clear.
Okay. And we haven't signed with EMS yet. So we're going to continue to speak? Most likely?
I don't think so.
I mean, if you send the contracts out and there's no dispute, they have signed what they've done. Friday's the last day. I mean, Hefflin came back with a dispute, but...
Yeah, but it's Hefflin's gonna have.
Okay. But this is dealing only with Hefflin around now. Right, okay. So we have a motion on the table to let the City Hefflin have dispatching fees for seventy-five thousand, which is under seven hundred dollars for three years. Right. Do we have, and we have a second? You have a second?
I'm about to call to vote.
You're gonna call to vote? Alright. All in favor say an aye?
Aye.
Any ahs? No. Ahs have it. Any other update or anything? Are you taking motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor say an aye?
Aye.
Any ahs? Alright, ahs have it. Calling to order our communication continued meeting. Ms. Cobb?
Here.
Ms. Owens?
Here.
Ms. Hendrick?
Sir.
Mr. Hill? Here.
All four here. Matters to be addressed, the adoption of budget for year twenty-four.
I saw this way, we have two carryovers. The shelter, the animal shelter.
Okay.
Carry both of those over.
Where on?
Yeah, right. They got tables.
Yeah, I see that.
I thought we decided to carry over for him. So, really?
That's why I wrote down. That's why I wrote it down.
I don't, I don't, forgive me, because I wasn't here, so. Do it.
That, the next, so if I have time to get with the city prepared for it, we'll just carry that out.
I would have been able to tie it at least.
Do we have a contract?
That's what I'm pushing up, but that's what we're gonna talk about. Uh, we're ready, we are putting on the table?
Listen, yeah, well, let's, we can't put it on, but I mean, if it was on there... My thinking is a matter of... Your thinking, and your thinking, and you were the co-chair, and you take it, and you thought that it was taken?
Yeah, I don't have anything in my notes at all about the, I just have where it was taken.
Did we vote to table it?
Yes.
We voted to table it.
But not, but not to continue? You don't remember continuing from that?
I'm, I'm pretty, talking about tonight, but I'm just...
Okay.
Okay, but I'm just personally, they have, I don't have it in my mind.
Kill it.
I'm not going to even talk about it until, until it meets.
Okay. So y'all wanna do the budget, matters to be addressed, the adoption of budget for year twenty-four? We have a motion.
I don't know, you go do it.
Okay.
We got some questions before we vote.
Alright, um, I think it will be in orders for each of the, you have any questions now to ask the administrator?
The question I have is, uh, the total budget and what is our budget? What do you anticipate?
If you look on the second page, it'll show you exactly at the top. So about the third line down, it shows total estimated revenues for the year and then...
That's new revenue coming in?
Yes.
Not carrier?
Not carrier. Carrier was just the top line.
Uh-huh.
And then you got revenues, and then your, uh, total estimated expenditures are right over that. And then at the very bottom, it shows what our anticipated estimated revenues would be at the end of the year, at the end of the year. Which you can see is an increase from what the estimated carriers, carriers are.
Your carriers at the top.
The carrier of this year, and then at the very bottom, you'll see basically what should be carriers toward the end of this year twenty-four.
So the carrier of the total at the top is everything that will be left over of your, how do you think, because I know it's like several, like your, you wrote the balance way over, the service way over in his budget now.
It's estimated based on, um, all the revenues and expenses for the year, and then just the best I could for your anticipated revenues and expenses to know what that carrier is gonna be. And it is an estimate, because you don't have the full year's data, obviously. But that's what I estimate you will have the carriers is, is, is up at the top. And then, and when you get down to the bottom, that's what I estimate will have in that twenty-four. It revenues and expenses stay pretty well in this range.
Yeah, no problem.
Yeah.
Uh, to amend, nine-one-one's budget, seven hundred and what dollars? Sixty-five dollars?
I mean, we can do that, yes.
Yes, that's what I wanted to do.
Yeah.
EMA or nine-one-one?
Nine-one-one.
It's gonna reduce that number, that estimated twenty-four number, three. That by twenty-four, it's gonna reduce it by nine thousand and sixty-seven dollars and forty-four cents. Eighty-six.
Eighty-four.
Eighty-six. That is seven fifty-five, sixty-two times twelve a month. That is nine thousand and sixty-seven dollars and forty-seven cents, or forty-four cents. So that takes that number then to... One hundred and ten thousand, three oh one, eighty-four. For her revenue for the year. On that dispatch line, but then I have more of that dispatch line, and then the grand total. It's one hundred and forty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-six cents. Thirty-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars and ninety-six cents.
And while we're talking, uh, what is the forestry receipts due for now?
Forestry receipts, um, we have to distribute that, um...
Is any of it distributed by nine-one-one?
No.
But we do all those calls up there, and they're, I mean, that's tied to family, we don't, we don't know the money.
I'm used to it, they use it all in nine-one-one, because, but in the past, we asked that question. It was all used in nine-one-one. And that is how they used it was for, because of calls being dispatched for that area.
Let me rephrase my question. Is the money being used better, or using it the best way now, or could we use it for nine-one-one? I just want to...
I feel like we're going to do it.
Yeah, this is the, that's our, that's just a question I've had about that, because that's a lot, uh... You've got the forestry service, you've got Chi-Hong State Park, and I can't believe they have a lot of policies that'll come from up there as far as, you know, national forestry, so... I, I think on that little drawing that I seen one time, we used to go to Washington D.C., and it had the amulets and, uh, nine-one-one, how bad on that money, it would, it could be used for something else. And if it's used the best way, I'm fine, but I'm just thinking...
We actually get, we actually get a big check that's much more than that, but some of it gets distributed out. This is what the portion, portion of the county actually gets to keep. But there are limitations on what can be used for, and I can live with what those limitations are.
Okay.
That, yeah, that has been some of the people used to do in the past, because it is with nearly one-third of our counties for national forestry. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah, and because we questioned it many years ago about that, because say, the fire departments, if they were making a call in that area, they have a right to get reimbursement for it, but they never have. But they have under the law, under that, that money, if they will show the reimbursement of the manpower that they used up there, the equipment they used, they get reimbursed out of that money.
Well, you know, the other thing, we may not have that certain rest to use to go out and claim the trails and stuff, and then we would reimburse them and stuff like that. But I think it got to be a problem not doing it on trail management. I can't remember that part of the plan. Anyway, if you're looking at that, appreciate it.
I asked for shooting, he asked. Okay. You, on page six, the same page, you fixed that?
Yes, sir.
Oh, yeah.
There's one, we should, this person.
Hey, was it, was it the date where it was added?
That's right. Four dollars was incurred, and we don't have one of that, this person.
Uh, well, we can call Crystal back, I wish we'd all recognized the two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars in grants that she got last week for all the consuls and stuff, I think. We got tied up in the unimportant business on something as important as that, to get it to happen. Four million dollars is pretty big, but if we would, I'm gonna go back and thank her for that. I mean, that's way more than her salary is paying for itself. That's gotta be looked at.
Okay, on page fifteen. On two sixteen.
What page, you're on?
Page fifteen. On nine two sixteen.
Page one of the wrong ones. So, it's mine or yours, yeah, it's not y'all's. It's not y'all's, it's just mine and hers.
I understand every year we come together.
But that should be the same, yours should be the same.
Yeah, all y'all's, yeah, that's good, it's just...
And also, but EMA, EMA and nine-one-one close together, so we all can get them all through at one time instead of...
Okay, so what?
Go ahead.
Which department are we on? I'm sorry.
Fifteen?
Okay, on page fifteen.
Sure, jail.
Jail.
On two sixteen. Uh, what I wrote down here is we agreed to move that to seventeen thousand, and on our, your meeting budget, you got eighteen thousand.
I have eighteen thousand written down, um...
I think I wrote it down, yeah, I don't know if it's in there yet.
Do you know what you have written down?
What, what line was it?
It's one two sixteen. It's seventeen thousand, seventeen thousand. Well, she's probably running, because I'm writing, and it was fifty.
Okay.
You guys, so...
Well, you're gonna change that to seventeen.
I'm gonna change it to seventeen.
What, I mean, that's what you said, I need to just go back to what we got last year, run on that.
That's planning and editorial.
Yeah, yeah, I like it, yeah.
Okay.
You like mine better, David.
I'm gonna take the order, I'm gonna take the last of the question.
Okay, and you, on page seventeen, you got a corner salary straighten out.
Yes, this is correct.
Did y'all get any, any information on the vehicle that the corner saw coming?
I sent y'all an email Friday, did y'all get that?
I did.
Okay.
Did you show me the list of two?
No, I did not send that to the list, I just sent that to you.
I always copy her on the two, because she'll have to incorporate any spending in the budget.
But that's basically, I, there's several on the Outlaw Surplus website, and, uh, like I said, the top move will work. Uh, I spent most of the day last Wednesday. It's gonna work. We'll just have to do some modifications on transporting a larger body. Probably won't be able to transport them on the cot because of the height difference with the cot into the back of the vehicle, but, you know, I can, if, if that's what y'all wanna do, I can make that work. I'm willing to... Alright, page twenty-two.
Thank you.
Uh, why is it on the five sixty? In the last addition, this is fifty thousand, now it's a hundred thousand and five hundred dollars.
I changed it back to the original, and there's a reason for that. Um, we had opted back, or the commission had opted back months ago to, um, discontinue the thirty-dollar court fees over to the gasoline tax, um, because we had purchased so much equipment for the road department. Well, that doesn't really have anything to do with that movement of that money, this coming from, um, general fund over to the gasoline tax. So that wasn't really gonna help the situation, because what it is, is this money actually comes from somewhere, from elsewhere. Comes from, um, a couple of different gas taxes, and MBL, and again, a couple of places. Well, that money is still gonna come in, and so that money actually needs to be spent to reimburse the county for the money taken out of reserve to purchase their equipment. So that money still needs to stay there.
What is your balance, ma'am?
Oh, it's way in the hole. Way, way down, yes. And then, he, actually, they have another piece of equipment being delivered Thursday, so I'm gonna be looking at catching up with a couple of you, probably tomorrow, to get an annual check signed, because that piece of equipment being delivered, so...
Which, which is next?
It's a Peterville truck, dump truck.
Oh, yeah, dump truck.
Right, and it ought to have been approved on resumption.
Yes, this, this, this is...
Right back to you.
Yeah.
Have we sold the oven yet?
Uh-uh, no.
Okay, when you sell the oven, you'll get ninety-five percent of that money back.
It'll help, it will. Right now, it's, um, it's over four hundred thousand out of the reserve, and we're fixing to make another couple thou, a couple hundred thousand out for that truck. But, uh, it'll, it'll work itself back around as soon as he starts selling some of his old stuff. So, um, what, what I suggest, and this is just totally up to you, is going forward, instead of making my normal end-of-the-month transfer over for that thirty-dollar fee over to gas tax, which we have not been doing, I suggest we move it over to the one thirteen account, and that way he's paying off some of his equipment. But that's, if you wanna leave it in general fund, that's fine, too. Still being tracked, because it's going into the same revenue code each month. We, we can easily go back and see how much money of the thirty-dollar court fee has been not paid out to the gas tax funds. It's all a start.
See, that'll be my next question. The one thirteen, on page twenty-nine, it went up fifty thousand. Both of them went up fifty thousand.
Yeah, now that one, okay, that's what I did then. I went on, put the fifty thousand as if you weren't gonna do that, as if you were gonna prohibit an increase of that fund.
But these didn't, these didn't tie it up.
My base number for my stuff, so I'm, I'm like trying to random find what you're looking at. Let me see.
So, page twenty-nine.
Okay, that was actually right, so I can, on the one thirteen, fine?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't change anything on that one. I changed that, that one hundred thousand, five, the one hundred thousand, five hundred dollars, that is the amount that's on that line. That would increase, um, because it comes straight from that page.
Okay, but on...
That is actually anticipated revenues for one thirteen. And that is from other funds, not the... Not the court. This immediately would change from five hundred thousand to one hundred thousand, five hundred. If I change it on, on the other page, it would automatically back that, and I did see that.
Okay, so...
Because that is the anticipated revenue from one thirteen.
So, on the last addition, it's seventy thousand, on this addition, it's a hundred twenty thousand, five hundred. Now, that's what you just said, makes that right?
Yes, it does make it right.
Okay.
So, basically, you're taking and moving it, are you moving it to the general fund, back to the general fund, or where you...
Right now, the thirty-dollar court fee is going, going into the general fund. It always does.
And, but I know it does, I know it does, but you're keeping up with it, so you know what his balance is.
Yes, it's tracking.
And then it goes back the way it was.
Yes, we can take it back to what it was whenever you decide to do that. It will not be done automatically, it will be a conversation.
But you thought in a couple of years, right?
Probably so, yeah.
That's what I, that's the way I remember it, okay.
Right now with that much equipment, yes. It'll take a while.
Okay, I'm sure.
Any other questions?
I'm not, I have to carry out that one little...
Thirty, I'm thirty-one, but two-nine-one-one. That dropped twenty thousand from the last addition to this addition.
It did, because we, um, dropped the amount that we were allowing on that line that she had some equipment on, let's see.
The one that was forty-four thousand, that's part of twenty-four.
We dropped it, we dropped it to twenty. We dropped it down to twenty-four, and that's actually the piece of equipment she got the grant for. But her original...
Now, did, did we still have, still have, did we take or put out the one for, she had one in there for the console, I think the one for sixteen, did we have that in our budget? One of those that she just got, she said we might get a grant for?
She got two grants.
She got three.
She got three, she got...
She got all three of them.
I don't think she was in the...
I, I couldn't remember, was it gonna add it, or was it gonna add, was it gonna add it that she got if she didn't get the grant on that console, or one part of it? Because in her budget, she's got a surplus of what, two hundred and... How much is her surplus, surplus, so she's got, the one she's buying a vehicle out of, but... Nine-one-one carryover, is it, is it the two, two eighty-three?
Expected to close out on nine-one-one, it's on thirty-five thousand dollars.
That's for this year. Her expected to close out for nine-one-one, now it's fifty-five thousand, you'll get that twenty out.
I'm counting for that, yeah, it comes with the grant.
Right, well, and really, we took, you all took the twenty out and left the twenty-four in there for her buy that piece of equipment, and it's, it's got a grant now. So theoretically, you can take it down to zero, since she weren't putting anything, anything else in there. But I would recommend that you don't do that, because normally she has twenty thousand in there anyway. So there is equipment she's gonna have to purchase. I mean, if you want, you can take it down to twenty, go ahead, but I really don't think it's...
No, I'm just, just...
Yeah, I think it's fine, as I'm confident in that.
You had homework.
Yeah. Well, first of all, since Crystal's back, well, sorry, we got tangled up in useless stuff, but we want to thank you for the great work you're doing.
Any more yet, yeah?
Outstanding.
Appreciate that.
Uh, one thing I just bring up, and we don't have to do it this year, but I do want to separate them. Uh, our cleaning person, when we hire one, is going to answer into Crystal's cabinet. And, uh, in the process of that, I would like to look at that budget as far as breaking it up to where Crystal will be, uh, working with a new person as far as way that budget works out next year, so we can look at separating those two budgets, so we can get a better handle. I know a lot of times, the stuff that goes on here gets carried to the courthouse. I know a lot of times the stuff that goes on here gets carried to the courthouse and all over because it don't get ordered and stuff. So I think with a new person that we're gonna have on cleaning and Crystal taking charge of, of being over that person, uh, don't you think?
Yes, sir.
You think that's a better idea? So that way she would have, uh, I'm just thinking, some of it's pretty simple. We'll sit down with Brad and go over that and sort of see what it takes to run this building, because to light it up a good bit differently. Because some of the money that runs this building is also in your administrative fund. So it might not be a whole lot of this budget right here that might come out, but I just don't want to get to where. Crystal is dealing with four or five people pulling money out of this one thing because what is, you know, to make sure, if, if it's clarified like it is, you know, like it is, it's fine with me. But I just think it might need to be broken down a little bit different from the cleaning from here to the courthouse, because the north courthouse, they got their own, some own stuff down there. You know, it, it all comes out of this budget, there's stuff for here, there's stuff for down there. And, uh, so the way it won't be, we'll know who this can draw out, so I'd like to at least add, uh, Crystal to the POs and whoever else we hire. Or, it might just need to be Crystal. And then once we get, make it down the road, we'll add who we're gonna add to the next. Uh, but I'd just like to be able to add Crystal to being able to personally run this budget. Everybody with a say with that?
Any questions concerning?
You want to do?
I mean, it looks to me except version three O with the next week's system.
I got one. That no home bag, but it is a cat over. Is that going to apply for twenty-four?
Yes, and that change that on the budget list.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, I feel that much more, yeah. I would do that recently, so.
Now, it's.
That's good. I'm glad you caught that.
All right, so your motion is to accept this is, this is.
This is.
Accept version three O with the, uh, changes we made, and those changes you got knocking. You have a, there's a second.
I'm sorry.
Second discussion. You're, you're asking if.
Discussion, okay.
Yeah, yeah. Is your.
Is it a party? Is it everybody else decide?
Y'all.
Again, we should, we should reflect it. Throw all the money back in there.
All right, all of y'all saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, you haven't said you were aye, or did you say aye? You're a no?
Yeah.
Okay. You're the one making the motion. Okay. We got three ayes and one no, but the motion carries. Completed. I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna take a motion to adjourn.
All fair saying aye.
Uh-huh.
And now with adjourn, could we talk about something like this?
Yeah.
This is a corner of his vehicle. Couldn't, we give him Crystal over and she gets to do it.
Well, I don't, I don't think I, but it's Crystal's over, you wouldn't be putting nothing in it.
What model is, what model are? Now, the thing you gotta keep in mind, the, the tour that I put the cot in was a two thousand fifteen. They're a little bit bigger, was Crystal, it's about twenty-ten or. Twelve, yeah. I don't know if the, I don't know if the length on it's gonna be the same as on twenty-fifteen. I think, which the twenty-seventeen is the one that I checked on a lot. I know the size of the twenty-seventeen, twenty-fifteen are the same, but I think there was a step up in the length and width of the vehicle. Somewhere between two thousand ten and two thousand fifteen. Yeah, I mean, I'll be glad to look at it, see.
They got a whole lot of miles on that Ford, right, too?
I mean, I, I'll be glad to look at it, certainly.
Check it out.
As long as we can make that work, I, I'll be fine with it.
Hey, can we, I get a copy of the, the. Dog pound scope. For the attorney.
Well, the only thing that they have discussed in what the, what the attorneys are talking about right now, we go back to the. It matters, but let me, it's saying what we insert. By state law, the city of Hefen has to abide by the head law. So you're asking, and, and so, I mean, that's, this is the way it is. Other, but, but it is, but, and that's what, uh, actually was saying. Resilience will say, uh, in place to justify, and all of our resolutions should do that. What they're saying is, is you're asking for something that they already had applied by the law, but, but anyway, this is all the taxes right here that I've been getting between them two, so.
If it's not something printed out, then that's not. So, uh, and we meet again October second for work session. And then the sixteen, so we're going back to the regular schedule, right? No, no special call meetings or anything, okay? Then that is Columbus Day, so that won't affect us. Is that right, Amy?
No.
I'm sorry. Come back.
Could I give, I can, I can give everybody a copy of that resolution that I had, that I presented last week, didn't I?
Yeah.
I just, I just thought you had it.
Now, the only thing, the only thing the attorney asked for is, is to make sure that the city of Hefen follows state head law. Which by law, they have to do that. But anyway, let them figure, I mean, it's over with right now until the next meeting, and then if they need, whatever he needs, the letter saying. They can, and he said, I feel they can ask for an audit, you know, the county can ask for an audit from the city, or you could go ask the city for an audit, whatever. But they have to use the money the same way that we did as far as.